Okay, we're gonna call our regular city council meeting into order. Today is Monday, June 10th. We're here at five twenty-five. We'll first have our invocation and pledge allegiance. The invocation will be by Reverend Matt McColl.
Let's pray. Holy God, you are the guardian of our lives and the keeper of our souls. It is you who remains faithful when all else falls away. So we trust not in ourselves, but in your goodness alone to meet our daily needs. As you have sheltered your people in the past, we watch for signs of your presence among us still, as we seek to overcome the difficulties that confront us. Grant us a vision of your will and lead us to an unknown future. Bless our leaders here locally. Guide our mayor and our city council with your wisdom and discernment. Pour out your grace upon this land of ours, oh Lord. Keep watch over it and protect it, for it is in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, guys, welcome, welcome, welcome. All right, first on the agenda would be the approval of minutes of the May 28, 2024 regular city council meeting and the May 28 work session.
I will approve the minutes that submitted.
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion changes to allegiance? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, number two is a report from our mayor.
Good evening, council. Just want to remind everybody that tomorrow at the Nick Center at 10:30, they are doing a hurricane preparedness seminar. It's with Sphinx Meganson, who is the red zone weather meteorologist. Really excited that they're doing that. Sherry Swartz from the police department's also been working on that project. We have a lot of new folks in town and not sure what to do when a hurricane comes, so this will be a good chance to educate yourselves about what to expect, how to prepare, those types of things. We actually had a good preparation with the tornado that came through. Great for our staff to, you know, kind of see where we had some holes in communications and different things, but for the most part, I think our staff did a great job cleaning up. Everybody was all hands on deck like it typically is, and thankfully, everybody was able to do that safely, and we were able to get the beach back open and get those areas cleaned up and get things taken care of. So I really appreciate the staff and especially utilities, public works, all those folks, police that came out and just took care of business, so took care of our citizens. Also, this week on Wednesday, we have coffee with the mayor. That's gonna be at Quail Creek, and that is at nine o'clock. And so that's just an informal time for people to be able to come, get an update on the city, and, you know, ask any questions they would like to ask. Typically have pretty good participation, but again, just a real informal setting for those folks who don't feel comfortable coming to a council meeting or even just calling the office. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, mayor. Coffee with the mayor on Wednesday.
What time is that?
Nine o'clock. Quail Creek. Quail Creek clubhouse. Very good, okay. Very good. All right, agenda item number three is public participation. Agenda items five through twenty-three, I believe. Yep. Anybody speak on agenda items five through twenty-three? Please come up, give your name, your address. You have three minutes. All right, seeing that there's none, we'll move on. All right, council comments?
I have none.
You have none?
No comments.
None.
Robson?
That's a boom. All right, well, very good. I don't have any either. Okay. All right, agenda item number five is a final adoption. It's an ordinance repealing ordinance number fifteen-ten, adopted April 14th, 2014, and adopting a new personnel handbook for the city of Fairhope. This was introduced at the city council meeting on May 13th, 2024.
Yeah, one or two ways to do it. I can argue either way as far as taking it back and publishing it and holding over, but I think what you can do, it's such a one paragraph minor change, I don't think you have to do it, but to ease anybody's angst, you can make an amendment to it and then treat it like a first reading, and then waive a second hearing, and then go ahead and adopt it tonight. I mean, that covers all bases.
Yeah, I mean, it's still, it's not so much of a change of the larger instrument, just a couple of wordings, but...
So I will make a motion for final adoption with the inclusion of amendment one, which is...
The... I don't have the paper.
Well, she had, uh, we're...
Mayor.
Mayor, yeah.
Did I say all that right, Marcus?
Correct.
Yeah.
Now, I don't think we have to make a motion to amend, right? Because that would be, I think it would just...
No, it's just as is, and then it has...
Just like I did, right?
You have to have a, you have to suspend the rules and go ahead and adopt it tonight.
Got it, right.
So it doesn't have to lay over, because we've already got a publication date of the 19th anyway, and that's when it goes into effect.
But does that to be reintroduced then with that amendment one then maybe real quick? Probably does, doesn't it? Or that may be, that may point to something being more substantial.
You're introducing it as an amended...
As amended with the writing of what's in red with Hannah, I don't have it in front of me.
Did you want me to review that real quick? Just, it was vacation accruals, the way those were different? It was the change, change in the IT policy?
I want to reintroduce the ordinance with amendment one as the mayor will define.
Okay. It was a change in the IT policy when, as relates to passwords. The original handbook that was introduced said that you provided your supervisor with your password. You do not have to do that. That's just a technical change that was recommended by the IT department. There was a change in the vacation accruals, those eight hours of vacation accruals, and I'm sorry, Hannah had to leave, she had to go pick up her daughter, but there was one more thing. Oh, yeah, standby, the residential requirements for standby with city limits. That was something we evaluated based on, gave the supervisor a little bit more leeway to allow folks who may not live in Fairhope to take standby on call.
That's been introduced.
With those changes there to what the mayor just spoke publicly?
Addendum one.
Right, with the addendum, correct.
Addendum one, not amendment.
So it's been introduced, I'm going to, it's been introduced, but we need to suspend the rules on this particular one?
I make a motion, we suspend with the rules and approve the final adoption as Councilman Burrell presented with the addendum.
Okay.
I second the motion to suspend with the rules.
All right. Any further discussion?
Place one.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, final adoption, okay.
Make a motion for final adoption.
A second. I was just trying to share it a little.
Yeah, yeah, okay. A motion and a second if you ask a question.
Place one.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, gentlemen, congratulations on that one. All right. Agenda item number six, it's another final adoption. It's an ordinance to approve the annexation of territory within the city limits of Fair, city of Fairhope, Alabama, various right-of-wades within the Montrose from Baldwin County Commission, introduced at the city council meeting on May 13th, 2024.
I'll move for final adoption.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Place one.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for that. All right. Agenda item number seven, if I could get someone to...
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Thank you, Councilman Burrell. This is an ordinance, an annexation for adjacent tickle property located on the east side of Section Street, approximately 875 feet south of Twin Beach Road, Fairhope, Alabama. Tax parcel zero five four six zero nine two nine zero 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 zero, and we have about seventeen point seven five acres more or less.
Council president, let me introduce that ordinance.
Okay, Jack introduced it, but we'll accept that as well. All right, so we'll...
Speak up, Dan.
Yeah, he says, "Speak up," Councilman Burrell. If there's no other further discussion, we will allow this, there's nothing immediate about this one, council, I think we'll let this one sit out for a couple of weeks. All right. Agenda item number eight, this is, if I can get someone to introduce the ordinance...
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Thank you, Councilman Conyers.
I'm not doing it.
Thank you, Councilman Boone. This is an ordinance to repeal ordinance number fifteen fifty-one and amended by ordinance number sixteen twenty-two and seventeen forty-three, and codified as chapter two, article three, division eight of the Fairhope Code of Ordinances, and dissolve the city of Fairhope Historic Preservation Committee. All right, so this is something that our legal team, Mr. Williams, brought to our attention, and any questions or any discussion on this? This is just gonna dissolve our normal Fairhope Historical Committee in order to get ready to create a commission. All right, we'll let this one lay over for a couple of weeks. Very good. All right, agenda item number eight is a resolution that the city council authorizes acceptance of a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. This is a grant for the city of Fairhope First Responder Safe Room Project, grant number four five six three zero 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 two, in the amount of two point, two million four hundred and thirty-three hundred thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars and five cents, and authorize Mayor Sherry Sullivan to sign all necessary documents. The city, the city's share of the project is two hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and nine dollars and sixty-seven cents, which is a ten percent match. In addition, grant management costs in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and four dollars and eighty-four cents will be set aside through the FEMA to contract with a FEMA knowledgeable grant management firm. All right, guys, Richard spoke about this. It's a ninety-ten match.
I move to authorize acceptance of the grant.
Second. All right, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, very good. So hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right, motion carries. So, mayor, this room will hold almost a hundred people, correct? Seventy-seven, I saw?
That's correct.
Plus the two office spaces?
That's correct.
And we can use those in off-seasons?
We can use it in off-seasons for training. You can't put permanent offices there, but you can use it for training. It'd also have a generator, so there'll be backup power, be a great training facility for us, as well as, again, give us a safe place. Most of you know that our buildings that we have were built way before there was a lot of codes related to hurricanes around here, so being able to have this safe room for our employees would be, you know, great for us during hurricane season.
Yeah, I think it's really cool. Very good. All right, did we vote on this, guys?
We voted on nine.
I think we got a motion and a second.
Do we have a vote, Jenny?
That is correct.
We did not?
You did.
We did, very good. All right, agenda item number ten. This is a resolution that the city council authorizes acceptance of a FAA Airport Infrastructure Grant, otherwise known as AIG, in the amount of eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars and zero cents, and ALDOT grant of documents. The grant will pay construction costs for the parking lot at the new terminal building at the H.L. Sunny Callahan Airport. I think Council Burrell spoke about this a little bit.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This will be creating a parking lot. This is money in additions to monies that they've already gotten in order to cover the parking lot. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number eleven, it's a resolution that the city council authorizes the submission of a Pipeline and Hazardous Material Safety Administration Grant to USDOT for the fiscal year of 2024, Natural Gas Distribution Infrastructure Safety and Modernization Grant Program for gas pipe replacement. The grant amount is approximately fifteen million dollars, and will cover the remaining four phases of the pipe replacement. All right.
So moved.
Yeah, go quick, change their mind. I have a motion and a second. There is no match to this, the Lord willing, it comes all in, and this will help us tremendously. It's not sexy, but it's a good thing. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I think it's very sexy. Fifteen million dollars is saving the city potentially. It would be awesome if we get this.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's sexy too, but the majority, I wouldn't think, would agree with us, Jack. All right, very good. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Great job, guys, getting money. All right, agenda item number twelve, it's a resolution that the mayor, Sherry Sullivan, is hereby authorized to execute a change order number one for RFQ, for professional engineering services, for the De Olive Creek Crossing gas main leak repair with a cost of three thousand three hundred dollars, and to award a change order number one to Sawgrass Consulting, LLC. The new contract total will be twenty-five thousand two hundred dollars. All right.
So moved.
Second. All right, motion and a second. Okay, it's a change order for logistics purposes. All right, very good. Any further discussion, guys? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda item number thirteen is a resolution that the mayor, Sherry Sullivan, is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Pipe Suite, a division of Pain Management, Inc., the professional consulting services for natural gas pipeline distribution compliance, RFQ with not to exceed amount of fifty-three thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and zero cents annually. Annually, very good.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Wes spoke to us about this. It's a company coming in to help make sure that we're in order as far as our federal regulations and things of that nature. So, very good. Any further discussion, guys?
I have one quick question on that again. Wes, was that a not to exceed amount?
Yes, sir.
It's a not to exceed?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Very good.
Oh, it says not, it says it right.
Yes, sir, it says it. Yeah. Any further questions, Council Burrell?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, all in, do I have a motion and a second, Mr. Jenny?
Yes.
Yeah, very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right, motion carries. Agenda item number fourteen is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of parts and installation for the UV sickness system at the wastewater treatment plant from Trojan Technologies as the sole source and manufacturer. The cost is forty-one thousand forty-eight dollars and ninety-five cent plus freight and handling charges. The equipment is exempt from formal bidding per Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one sixteen fifty-seven B one. All right.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This seems to be, we're ordering parts for our, for our wastewater.
Staying ahead of the game.
Staying ahead of the game, I love it. All right, guys. Motion and a second, any further discussion?
I have one. Daryl, did you say that included installation when the time comes?
It did.
Okay, so thank you.
Yes, sir, it's parts and installation. Great question. I got a simple question on these things, and I know Council Burrell, we'll go through it, but the warranties on these, do they come with particular warranties every time we order these plants, parts, excuse me, for the plant?
I can get you mentioned, sir.
Okay.
I'm sure they do, but I can get you definitely.
Yeah, okay. Just a simple thing, but look at it. Okay, guys, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, very good. All right. Agenda item number fifteen is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of a third eye camera and GPS tracking system for sanitation trucks that are on the Alabama statewide contract, contract number MA twenty-three zero 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 three four three three with Ingram Equipment Company, and therefore does not have to be let out to bid. The total purchase amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-six thousand dollars and sixty-eight cents, and to approve the transfer of budget funds from a sanitation maintenance to sanitation purchases. Okay? I think George gave us a little...
So moved.
Synopsis on this.
Second.
All right, so this is a third eye camera, I think we're putting this on seven trucks, and this helps us with a lot of the claims that we're getting as far as CYA is concerned. Very good. All right, any further discussion?
Just glad nobody's videoing me at my desk every day.
That's right. All right, yeah, that cat video system is gonna be, that's gonna be something. All right, anyway, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right, motion carries. All right, agenda item number sixteen, that the mayor, Sherry Sullivan, is hereby authorized to execute a change order number one for a bid on the Pecan Building Warehouse Roof Replacement with a cost of fifty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, and to award the change order number one to Roof Doctors of Alabama, Inc., and authorize the treasurer to transfer fifty-four thousand eight hundred dollars from the general fund to the water and sewer fund. The new contract total will be two hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. All right. I think, Richard, you spoke on this one, I believe.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, council? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right, motion carries. All right. Agenda item number seventeen is a resolution that the mayor, Sherry Sullivan, is hereby authorized to execute a change order number one for Pine Street One Way Conversion and Parking Project with a cost of thirty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars and zero cents, to award change order number one to RHD's Building Company, and authorize the treasurer to enter a fiscal year twenty-four budget transfer of thirty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars from ADA Compliance Project Savings to Pine Street Capital Improvements. The new contract total will be two hundred and eighty-two thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and zero cents. Okay, so we're transferring funds from ADA Savings, Kim, to the capital improvement, is that correct? Okay.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, guys? Yeah, I think this is gonna help.
Improvements to that part of town.
That's what I was about to say, I think this is gonna help that little area tremendously. That was never a two-way street. It was maybe for the little horse and carriages, I'm not sure, maybe, back in the day, but not for vehicles, especially somebody with fifteen hundred or twenty-five hundred always come through there.
So, yeah, for a rec, how many parking places are we picking up, Richard?
Twenty?
Thirty-seven additions.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven additions.
Thirty-seven.
Three hundred foot blocks.
Wow. Pretty good. That's really good.
Yep.
They may not take the mayor's parking spot every day now.
Well, we gotta talk about that. We gotta get her one. All right, guys, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right, motion carries. All right, Richard, good job. We'll keep that moving. All right, agenda item number eighteen is a resolution that the city council approves the selection by evaluation team for professional engineering coastal services for RFQ, for a Gulf of Mexico Engineering Security Act grant-funded capital improvement project, Magnolia Beach Restoration and Stabilization Project within the existing city park to Godwin Mills Kate Wood, and authorize Mayor Sherry Sullivan to negotiate the not to exceed fee to be approved by council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. You're putting sand on the beach, right? It's supposed to be building it up. Very good. All right, any further discussion, guys?
Yeah, I don't want this to go by without, you know, just kind of pointing out the significance of this as well. This has been something that's been needed for decades, and, you know, we've kind of put Band-Aid, we did what we could, you know, within budget limitations, but this is gonna be nice to hopefully have something a lot more permanent, and then just, you know, protect and re-nourish that beach.
Now, I can't remember, and I might be stepping out, the natural shoreline, no, not this one. The living, like, a part of this is a kind of a example...
Yeah, this wouldn't really be for a living shoreline, this is, would be adding, kind of similar to jetties out into the water, and then also, we spend about twenty-five thousand dollars every year replenishing the sand on that beach.
Right.
So this will help with some of that erosion, so we won't have to do that. But it'll also help the boat ramp, I mean, it's gonna help the flow of water there.
Yeah, stabilization, yeah, okay.
More for resiliency than anything else.
Yeah, that's what I thought, that's why I didn't know if we were, okay. Very good. I guess we'll have an example of a natural shoreline somewhere, somewhere around here. Any further discussion, council? And I think this is a big deal, Councilman Burrell, this is huge, especially with someone like yourself that's been sitting around waiting on it, you know what I'm saying? So, yep, God bless you, yep, thank you for progress. All right, any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda item number nineteen, it's a resolution that Mayor Sherry Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract for an extension number one for RFQ, Urban Forester, related to the Gomesa Grant, to Fulghams, Inc., for one-year extension of the annual contract, January twentieth, twenty twenty-four, to January nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, per the same terms and conditions of the original contract. All right.
I make a motion to approve the extension.
A second.
A motion and a second. So this reads, just for extension for just one year, is that correct, guys? Okay, all right, I just want to make sure. All right, so any further discussion on this?
So that's an additional forty-two thousand dollars, right? Are they, I mean, is there that much work to be done there for the next year?
Well, I understand we're still in this year's budget, so that was the challenge is we, they're doing consulting, but it's nowhere near that amount, and it has not been near that amount, but the problem is the contract expires, we have to do it, we have money budgeted, I have to get through a budget money for it after October one, but we had to get the contract back. Okay.
After October one fiscal, this year?
We won't go over that originally, we just had to figure the contract.
Okay. All right, council, any other questions on that? It's kind of, okay, all right. And we have a way out after October one, correct? Is that what I'm hearing? A choice, in other words.
If there's no money budgeted in the next year, then we have a contract, but we don't have, what, we would not be able to use it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, yeah, okay. All right, very good. Okay, any further discussion, guys? So I guess we have to make sure that we put the budget, some money in the budget for that, for that, because that makes, if we think we're gonna need.
Well, I think what maybe you're thinking, you're thinking, and what I'm thinking is that if you sign a contract with this person to January twenty twenty-five.
That's what I'm.
Don't you have to honor that contract?
That's why I'm asking, do we have a way out?
Right, but if we don't call, if we don't call on them, then they're not incurring, we're not incurring any fee.
It's a not to exceed amount as well, then?
It's a consultant service contract, meaning that.
You only call.
When we call and say, hey, we need, we need you to do this or help us with this, and then this contract just says, if we provide services, this is what we charge per hour or service.
So the forty-two thousand is a budgeted amount, then?
That is correct.
Contract amount.
Is not what we owe them.
But the contract says that you can't bill ever in any one fiscal year more than that either. So it does have a not to exceed on an annual basis. And what we're, you know, they've done a great job for us, and they've been a very good help, but we're, we're trying to equip ourselves, and we don't need them starting the next budget year.
Yeah, I'm not trying to beat up on them either, I just.
And I can tell you right now, we, Georgia and I, have not put any professional services in the budget for next year for this, this contract, so.
Yeah.
But the problem is, is we've used them and then discovered the contract had expired. That's why we're here, and we're just trying to get everything back proper.
Yeah. We want to pay it, we pay whatever.
Yep, that makes sense, Richard. It's, sometimes it just doesn't make sense when you're reading it, no matter how much detail you read into it. Okay, very good. Where am I, Jenny?
You've got a first and a second.
All right, any further discussion, guys? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, agenda item number twenty is a resolution, be it hereby resolved that the governing body of the City of Fairhope hereby accepts the statutory warranty deed from BYCLLC for certain property that will serve as a sewer lift station. The city clerk is authorized to record said deed in the probate records of Baldwin County, and the treasurer is directed to pay said monetary sum as indicated in the deed. The parcel is approximately point zero eight acres, and a copy is attached heretofore reference. And this is some legal stuff that we have to take care of as far as our lift station. Marcus kind of explained it for us a little bit in the work session.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. This is attached as well. Agenda item number twenty-one is a resolution that the Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a construction easement for work to be done on the Planters Point Lift Station, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion, guys?
So were these two, were, agenda items twenty and twenty-one, are those related, are they the same?
Yes, sir. They're sister and brother. All right, this is, so hearing no further discussion as far as these two resolutions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right, motion carries. All right, thank you, Lord. Let's go, let's see. Resolution, agenda item number twenty-two is a resolution that the City of Fairhope hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute the proposal from Greenwich as sole source for the annual fee of four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and forty-two cents. This is something we've been trying to do for a while, I think we had some paperwork issues, and now we're clear on all the, all the, all the.
We have an understanding.
Yes, we have a clear understanding now of what's going on as we partnership with Greenwich. So I believe we're moving forward. This should bring, Council Burrell, we've talked about this, this should bring some type of revenue back, lodging taxes back into our community as we round up. When I was briefly talking with Greenwich, they said we had over a hundred, about a hundred of these things in here somewhere, buried, so that's pretty significant. All right, any further discussion, guys? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Council President Martin, we need a motion.
I didn't get a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right, very good. Come on, guys, keep up now. You're on a roll, they want to interrupt. That's my apologies.
Kevin will introduce it.
My apologies, yeah. We know Kevin introduced him, that's.
Y'all are in trouble now.
Oh, man. Made me laugh. That's the first one I did not ask. I thought I was on top. Yeah, anyway. All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion, guys? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, agenda item number twenty-three is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the purchase of a hundred and forty-four cartons of Narcan nasal spray from Emergent Biosolutions as the whole source for a not to exceed cost of four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, and authorizes the use of funds from the McKesson Alabama Settlement Agreement. Chief spoke on this, this is a medication that medical providers use to reverse the effects of opioids, and we need a lot of it, it looks like, unfortunately, but this will save somebody's life, so.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, agenda item number twenty-four is public participation on anything, it's for the good of the order. Please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. Anybody? Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Autumn Zellner. I am the owner of Starz Early Learning Academy located at eight two zero nine Gaffer Road Extension. I am here today to humbly ask the City of Fairhope to help with some rainwater issues that we are having on the property. I have spent the last four years trying to make that space, a safe space for the children that I serve, for the families here in Fairhope. I am licensed for ninety-eight children. We currently have about seventy. We are a high-quality academy. We are ranked one of the very best in the state of Alabama. And my issue is with the rainwater that's coming onto my property. Like I said earlier, I've been working four years now to try to correct the issue. We took down some pine trees so that we could get light into the space. Basically, it's just kind of a low spot. About, earlier in the year, I thought I had finally fixed the problem, and we had a moment where we put in some extra fences and made it into an area for the children to enjoy, and I thought that we had, you know, fixed the mosquito is really a huge problem as well, the potential breeding ground. And then all of a sudden, it, the problem has returned, and it's worse than ever. I do think that the problem is because of some new construction going on down, down the way. When you fill in a hole over here, now I am again the low spot. So I'm just requesting some help if possible for the City of Fairhope to help fix this problem. I don't know what else to do other than to, to say that I have a beautiful retaining pond, and the water just can't get to it. So I do have a solution in mind, I just need help with getting approval and to get the dirt in there in order to direct the water towards the retaining pond at the front of my property. Right now, all the water is sitting in the back of my property, and it is a safety issue for the children.
All right. Yeah.
Yes, thank you, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I can just call you later?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good, very good. Yeah, water could be a problem. Anybody else? Anybody else, for the good of the order, public participation? Okay, guys. Since there's no one else, we will close public participation. And one of you fine gentlemen.
I'll move to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carried, meet and adjourn.